All right, at 6:01, I call this meeting to Saginaw City Council to order. Please rise for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the God with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, deliverable, and just as for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. Item number two is invocation. Is, I don't see Danny Howell anywhere. Do we have someone else? Would anyone on the council like to do the invocation?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you, Mr.
Pray with me. Most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for the opportunity to serve our citizens here in town and just pray that your wisdom flow through us and the decisions that we make are for the best interest for the citizens as a whole. Be with those who couldn't be here with us tonight. I ask special blessing on those here tonight. These things we ask in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, David. Item number three is audience participation. That is covered on the video screen. Please silence all your cell phones, devices, whatever you've got so we can have a nice council meeting. I'd like to say welcome those that are watching us online. I hope there's somebody watching us online. If there is, please send me a note and let us know how you enjoyed it and if you can hear well. So we are trying that out and still working out the bugs. Item four is the consent agenda. Let me see, item number, which one are we pulling?
H.
H. So we're gonna pull H.
Can we pull E as well?
Wanna pull E as well? Okay. So we're gonna do A, action regarding minutes of March 19th, B, action regarding joint election agreement and contract with Tarrant County, C, action regarding resolution 2019-7, continued participation with steering committee for Encore, D, action regarding purchase of one 2019-4 pickup truck, skipping to F, action regarding authorization of individual project order IPO with Kimley Horn, G, action regarding adoption of ordinance 2019-6, amending ordinance number 2014-10 by adopting a revised water management plan and revised drought contingency and emergency waste management plan for the city. So I'll entertain a motion for those items.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda pulling items E and H for further discussion.
Thank you, Patrick.
I'll second.
Valerie, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Both, there are none. Let the record reflect, we do have a quorum this evening. So, item, let's do, wanna do item E first? Let's do E.
I only have two questions. We're essentially creating two separate plats, as I understand it. This is at the, that would be the northwest corner of the T intersection of Longhorn and Knolls. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, it's two plats.
Well, there's one plat there and then one plat for the food truck park and farmer's market itself.
Okay. And the plat that we're creating, the 1.65 acres, it's for some future development?
Right, it's to accommodate future development. Yes, sir.
Okay. Are we considering any development at this point or are we just plating the land and getting it ready?
We have a prospective development in the works that we're working, working on agreements to bring something forward before the council.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on item E? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve consent agenda item 4E to add the, or to plat both properties at the northwest corner of Longhorn and Knolls.
Okay. Thank you, Patrick. Charlie, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Both, there are none. Thank you, folks. All right, moving to item H.
Mayor, I ask this item to be pulled. To be quite honest, I really have no idea what a tax increment reinvestment zone is and even though we're looking at an amount not to exceed $5,000, what do we look at for our return on an investment?
Sure, so the cost, the $5,000 contract is for a feasibility study, a not-to-exceed amount. The feasibility study would determine if a tax increment reinvestment zone makes financial sense for the city of Saginaw. So before we would proceed with sort of going through the process of explaining the details of that, determining a location and boundaries for it, really kind of doing any of the substantive work, we first need to just see if it's something feasible based on our budget numbers. So the $5,000 would enlist a consultant to actually do that work and determine some options for return on investment prior to us moving forward with sort of taking more time and staff time to evaluate the merits of it.
Mr. Mayor, if council recalls, I sent a couple of documents two weeks ago for informational purposes. A copy of one of those should be at your seat. It's called Tax Increment Financing 101. So would like to give credit to Dr. Bob Bland, who is one of my professors, and I saw him last Friday at the UNT alumni luncheon. I first learned about tax increment financing from him. So generally, what we're talking about with the TERES district is a defined geographic area. The benefit to the city, if it's determined feasible to pursue one, is we can get other taxing entities to participate in this financing, namely Tarrant County, potentially JPS Hospital District. We create a base value in a certain defined area and that base value stays for a set amount of time. The growth in the geographic area in value, in taxable value, is known as the increment. The tax revenue that's generated from that increment has to stay or be reinvested in that defined geographic area. So the best way we can look at it, we're leveraging not only our own resources but other taxing resources into a defined area. So the consultant will look at our situation, look at maybe some potential areas where we see future development and redevelopment, and come back with some recommendations, some TERES zones that you might recognize commonly in Tarrant County would include Old Town Keller was a TERES that Tarrant County participated, South Lake Town Center, I believe Old Town Burleson. There are over 300 throughout the state and it's a financing mechanism to leverage multi-jurisdictions, taxing entities to stimulate investment, reinvestment in a defined area.
And if I could just add again, the purpose of the feasibility study is to evaluate if it's even a potential to get matching dollars. So that's not a for sure, it's not a certain, until some of the groundwork is laid, it's really not, we're not sure if it is an option. However, a TERES is a tool that's been used, as Gabe said, widely around the state and it's something that may be very beneficial for the city to consider, but until we know basic information, it's hard to proceed.
So do we know what some of the criteria is at this point in time?
In the background information on this item, the three tasks that would be undertaken through the proposed contract would include a district review where they would collect and analyze available information for a proposed TERES, including some development data about projects that may be coming forward in a specific area and analyzing different spaces in the city to see if a boundary could be identified. Task two is then they analyze that data and based on that, then they can actually start to do a preliminary map. And then task three, this is all just part of the feasibility study, then they would actually be able to sort of come up with some options to say, okay, if we're able to get participation, some of the preliminary talks could be discussed with those partnering agencies that Gabe had mentioned. If we were able to get partnership at certain levels, what would that look like? Again, this just establishes a base for the work to be done. However, if the result of these three tasks come back, comes back and says basically it's not something that would be beneficial for the city, then we would not proceed any further, of course.
And how much, what's the area, I mean, at this time, we don't know. acreage, acreage, I mean, how much land is?
That would be determined through the feasibility study. Again, unfortunately, there's no information on exactly where that would be because it has to be evaluated first to see if it's an option.
So obviously, you think that there is a potential for that?
I mean.
For this TERES in Saginaw?
I mean, I think that there could be a number of locations, but again, it's gonna come down to the dollars, what's the kind of investment that we could receive back. But as Gabe mentioned, typically, you would draw the boundary where you know you're going to have development coming in and you would draw that map so that the increment value of that new development would be able to benefit maybe an area that's blighted or an area that could use redevelopment, an area that doesn't have new funds coming in, you're actually able through a TERES to take new development increment outside and above of what the city gets alone through those partnerships and you're able to turn it around and invest it in areas that otherwise don't have new capital coming in.
Okay.
So ideally, you would draw a TERES where you know you want public infrastructure assistance along, coupled with where you either know you have new development coming in or you expect that that's what you're gonna target as an area to develop. Hopefully, that makes sense. Unfortunately, it's, it can be a little bit complicated.
Yes.
And so that's why, you know, the feasibility study really is sort of that first step to getting some teeth behind having sort of, you know, the bigger discussions.
And are there any recurring costs after this that we'd be looking at?
There would be none. Unless and until, you know, if it is feasible and it's something that is brought before council for consideration, there would be a separate contract for moving forward with any sort of consultant to establish or administer any of that thing. So it's, again, this is just 5,000, just for the feasibility portion, and at that point, I feel like we'll have enough information to bring forward and council can make the decision on how to proceed.
Okay.
Laura, in your example, you're talking, it says attract potential developers and investments into the area. Can you give me an example of that?
Sure. Sure. So a TERES, like a lot of tools that the state provides for cities, is an opportunity to provide funding and financing, again, in an area that maybe is blighted and doesn't have that opportunity. And so for a lot of cities, for instance, if you have an area that is maybe not getting interest by new development because there are substantial public infrastructure sort of lacking in that area, for a development group to see that the city has in place a TERES and they have funding available for identified public projects for things like public infrastructure, as a developer, you say, okay, then there's the opportunity to have assistance with some of that gap there. So a TERES can be used in a lot of ways to be an incentive for welcoming in development because it's essentially saying, we're committed to providing a certain level of public infrastructure in an area.
Mr. Mayor, I might add, giving example from Dennison, there were three TERES districts in Dennison. One, they all have creative names, mostly numbers. So TERES number one was in Gateway Village. So that boundary was established. A developer had controlling interest in approximately 750 acres. When that TERES was created, through the agreement and through the life of the district, infrastructure improvements within that 750-some acres were reimbursable to the developer. So in a lot of areas and a lot of situations, you don't see development happen or you don't see redevelopment happen until there's available tools to encourage it. And, you know, Gateway Village in Dennison was on Highway 75, significant terrain issues. We're nice and flat here in Saginaw. We don't have to pump water or wastewater, thankfully, but not until that TERES was in place did TERES number one, Gateway Village, start developing. So in my time there, an apartment complex came in, they've got an urban air under construction, hayday and entertainment facility, none of that would be possible had the TERES not been in place and had reimbursable capacity to encourage the developer to invest.
Council, other questions?
Just a question on the deliverable. You wouldn't have to have any examples of a deliverable report, would you, what we'll see at the end of the study?
I don't have an example of the report, however, and Bryn can probably talk to this as well. This firm, David Pettit, is used, I mean, he's used widely around the area. A TERES can be fairly specific to an area, but the end result of what you get from a feasibility study is really the nitty-gritty sort of numbers. You get the data. You also get the beginning of a conversation with some partners, like the county, JPS, that kind of thing, who may be partnering. And then you also do get some scenarios based on different levels of participation from these organizations so that you can project out then what that would look like. Now, David is also, you know, he's happy to come at the end of the report to present it to, basically, what we, whatever it is that we need. He's gonna do the data gathering, he's gonna start laying that foundation, and then what we want that to look like at the end, if council would prefer it to just be a report or a presentation or a segue into sort of the second part, if council feels like it's something to proceed with, of establishing a TERES, he's really sort of full service. So, you know, at this point, I've worked with him in the past, I know a lot of cities who have, and the end result has been kind of different each time, but what it is, is that digging into the numbers, having some projections to start to chew on.
So Laura, is it reasonable to expect that we would see a map that would indicate potential target areas and the kind of money that we would see back, invest, reinvestment in the TERES over, say, a 20, 25-year period?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay? Thank you.
And I'm hopeful, to Patrick's point, I hope we would see a presentation. I think that's what council would like, is a presentation at the end of this.
Yes.
I have an example feasibility study that I could email to you. I'm sorry, I don't have it in paper, but I could do that right now as well, just so you have it.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion on this topic.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve item 4H on the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Valerie, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Both, opposed or none? Thank you. Thank you, Laura. Item number five, the folks from Boswell are not able to attend this evening, so we will move this to another time. Item number six, update from our friends at Community Link. We have lots of folks here. I think Jennifer Filippo and maybe some other folks are gonna present. So welcome.
No, I am not Karen Fuller. I am her spokesmodel. But I'm sure that all of you here recognize our esteemed leader. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate you letting us come here today. Some of you may know that I've been on the Board of Directors at Community Link for about a year. Very appreciative of being asked to be on there and have really enjoyed meeting everybody over there, really getting a feel for how the organization works. If you have not hopped by recently, we encourage you to do so and bring your checkbook. In 2018, Community Link served over 10,000 families. We serve seven zip codes right here. We serve Saginaw, we serve a little bit of Hasslet, a little bit of Fort Worth, a little bit of Castleberry area, Lake Worth. We're serving your neighbors. Back to school last year, 2,500 kids got backpacks and benefited from our Christmas event as well. We're doing back to school again this year. It's gonna be bigger, better, faster, stronger. We're probably gonna be serving more kids. So because of all these exciting events, and we anticipate growth because you know where the kids are coming from, you can see the sticks going up, they're gonna be here, we're gonna have a need, we needed help. So I would like to introduce you to our newest employee, our Director of Development, Trey Harper. We are very pleased that he is a city of Saginaw resident and voter. His lovely wife is a graduate of Boswell High School, is finishing her doctorate in social work, and they have moved here from Georgia and are very happy for her to be back home. So I'd like to have Trey say a few words. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for including me on the agenda. In preparing for today, I was reminded of the words of Helen Keller, who said, "Alone we can do so little, together we can do so much." This is the Community Link story. It started out in the parsonage of the Methodist Church, and I'm sure most of you know that story or connected in the story some way. And it's grown as Saginaw has grown, and with that growth comes great need, follows it. Community Link is thankful to have a great relationship with the city of Saginaw. I would say this is a pretty unique relationship in the support that the city receives from Community Link. It's not happening in a lot of communities, so we are thankful for that. It's our hope that in serving the over 38,804 individuals, which we did this past year, we have helped improving our community for providing the basic need of food to the citizens who live here. I was told not to ask for checkbooks today, but that is why I've been brought on to Community Link, is to work on growth operationally and in the form of capital funds, and so I'm working on a strategy to do that. And I'm in week three, so I'm still learning a lot, and I've already met many of you at this point and hope to continue to meet you all individually at another time. I know that there will be times when we will need to help each other, the city and Community Link, and hopefully, we can continue to collaborate to create a better Saginaw. If there's anything I can do for you all, let me know. Feel free to stop by, we're not far away. And now, we'd like to ask if you all have any questions.
What are your immediate needs?
So our immediate needs are fun things like replacing a side door that we can't completely lock accurately and correctly every night, and then making it safer, building a loading dock to make it safer to load and unload food. And then we are trying to get that house moved, which many of you are familiar with, off the proper property, and to imagine what that can be, we're still kind of seeing what the needs are there. So those are the immediate, immediate needs.
I guess a question to the council, is there something that the council would entertain to assist in immediate needs of Community Link when they are pressing or they present life safety issues or things of that nature? Is there something that the council would be interested in entertaining and helping support Community Link, maybe monetarily? Just to ask.
Mary, what?
Yes, Gabe and I have discussed this in the past, that there are several charities or organizations that I think would be a good idea for us to donate, and it can come out as a general fund and, you know, wouldn't make, wouldn't make much of a dent in our general fund, so I think it's a great idea. I thought these were always turned off.
And they're not. So I think it's a great idea to support Community Link. They do much good work for Saginaw and the surrounding area. And Gabe and I had discussed donating some funds to several different organizations, one of which was Community Link, and so we just hadn't gotten around to getting it on an agenda yet.
Sure, sure.
So I think it would be something great for us to do as a council.
I have a question. Do you know about how much the door, the, everything would cost?
$15,000.
All of it together?
Yeah, the door, yes. $45,000 and some change for the loading dock and door, 'cause it's a concrete project, really.
What kind of doors?
Valerie said she's got her checkbook with her right hand.
No.
We'll wait if you want to.
I love y'all, but. I don't know which door you're talking about, so I'm confused.
So it's the door that the volunteers enter from?
The side of the front.
That's right.
Oh, okay.
On the entrance.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're looking at replacing it with a sliding door.
With a sliding.
Is that the one I pulled open that night? To be honest with you, I went up there, there were cars in the parking lot, so I thought people were there. I grabbed the door handle and pulled on it and it just come open.
That's right.
And that's when I noticed that the light on the alarm was flashing, I went, oops.
Well, this, I see this as an opportunity for us to invest not only in the health of our citizens and community, but I know the efforts that Karen and her group have been putting forward for the past at least 10 years that I can recall, in putting backpacks on kids and equipping them to learn. It's an opportunity for us as leadership here in Saginaw and giving an opportunity for citizens to invest in our future. We're only as good as our next generation. So with that being the case, I think if we can help, if there's some way that we can offer monetary assistance in areas where you guys see it's critical and it's dire that you secure an area or things of that nature, I'm willing to move in that direction if the council feels that that's something that they would like to do.
In the past, we've been hesitant to give, pick one charity over the other. You know how that is. We have helped Community Link in other ways. I know we've done lots for them, code-wise and just different things to help out where we could. If we want to discuss it budget time issue, I think that might be the way to address it. Actually, that'd be the best way to look at it as a council as a whole. So let's just put that on our list when we get to budget and we can talk about it then.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think not only monetarily do we need to try to assist them, but they can never have too many volunteers. You know, I volunteer, I, what, two days a week, three days a week down there? And, well, I show up three days a week. Okay. But it gives you a warm fuzzy, you know? You're down there helping people that need help. And I don't know, I mean, not only monetarily, but volunteering can help.
So, Mr. Mayor, just wanna, I'm gonna ask a question, it's a budget-related question. Last year, we appropriated $10,000 towards a charity, possibly Six Stones or otherwise. Has that, has that fund been designated to a charity?
It hasn't. We've had some talks with a similar organization that's interested in doing rehab work. Mentioned what Mary said and what the mayor said, that the council has a past history of making donations to organizations, so I'm happy to, you know, we can put that in our next budget workshop if you'd like and, or try to find it somewhere this year, if that's council's pleasure, but.
But just to clarify, though, the money, the $10,000 is still in the budget. It has not been spent?
Not yet. We have some projects identified, not with Six Stones, but a similar group.
Okay.
That I think will, will probably.
Start in a couple months.
Starting in a couple months.
Okay, so it's all but committed right now?
Three, three homes have been.
Okay. All right, thank you. Just looking for an opportunity that existed in this budget.
Trey, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Appreciate y'all.
And good luck.
All right, moving on. Item number seven, consideration action regarding recommendation from the advisory recreation and parks board regarding fireworks display. For that, Rick Trice.
Yes, Sir Mayor, earlier this year, the park board had discussions, I guess they were disappointed because they didn't have the Christmas parade and the opportunity to ride their float, so they decided they'd like to sponsor a fireworks display that would happen on Saturday, July 6th. And so we're bringing this item 14 from the park board to recommend that we fund fireworks display. We've secured the Saginaw High School beyond the 6th, like I said. We need to go ahead and secure the fund so we can enter into a contract with the vendor to do the fireworks display. We recommend approval. Does she have any questions?
Questions for Rick? So how much of this is coming out of the donations fund? I'm looking at the.
Hundred percent of the donations.
That's what I thought.
There's ninety, ninety thousand plus. We have some, the, the fund balance that you see that's an attachment to the, to the action is a February statement. So, we've had some expense for Christmas lighting, but they've been minor, so there is sufficient funds.
We've got roughly ninety-one thousand, we want to spend ten thousand on the fire, okay. That's what I wanted to hear, that's what I wanted to hear you say.
Okay, well, I'll try to say that next time.
Thank you, thank you, sir. All right, council, other ques-
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to entertain the, the motion of approving item, here it is, item number seven on the consent agenda, or the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Patrick second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. As opposed or aren't it? Thank you. Move forward. Excellent. We got some, some cheers, excellent. We're looking forward to that. All right, so item number eight at six thirty-one, we're in a public hearing, continuation of curfew for minors. That, please Chief Rick Leehow.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is to provide the opportunity for the public input to the council regarding a reauthorization of an ordinance that provides a curfew for people under the age of seventeen. This law's been in effect since nineteen ninety-four. State local government code requires the ordinance to be reviewed every three years by the council and provide public input. So, this would be the first of two required public hearings. The second one would be in two weeks and, which would also include an action item for you to either renew the ordinance or not.
Chief, could you explain to us how you, your department would use this ordinance? Use this curfew to...
Yes, Sir, it's a, it's a tool if juveniles are located in public places unaccompanied by a parent or guardian, to allow the officers to detain them until typically we can contact a parent and make sure they understand where the child is, last year, or, or also just return them home. Last year, in the calendar year of twenty eighteen, there were only eight citations that were actually issued, and that number has significantly reduced in the every-three-year period since it was originally introduced. So, I believe we use it judiciously and file very few actual ordinance violations, but we do encounter a lot of juveniles after the curfew period, and we usually just return them home.
So, it is still a, an effective tool in your arsenal?
Yes, Sir.
Okay. Because I, and you mentioned it, my concern is I don't want us to use this to harass kids, I want it to use it for true public safety, for a reason. And I'm, I'm glad that the number's gone down, that's a good thing. I know crime has gone down, and I've seen those stats, so I'm glad that this has gone down accordingly, and we're, we're using it judiciously, so. Council, other questions, discussions? Mary?
I noticed under section fifty-four dash sixty-four defenses, and this section says, how are you exempt from these, from this curfew, the reasons you could be exempt. And the last reason is married or had been married or had otherwise had the disabilities of minority removed in accordance with BTCA Family Code, Chapter thirty-one. I don't know exactly what all of that means, but to me, it doesn't seem like whether or not a juvenile was married should exempt them from the curfew. Married people can, can, you know, commit offenses or, you know, I understand they're sixteen years old and there's probably not very many, but if somebody was out past the curfew time and had reason to, you know, perhaps they were having something illegal on their mind, just the very fact that they were married should not excuse them from breaking the curfew. In my opinion, we have another public hearing, so this is something we can think about. Do we actually want that to remain as one of the defenses? I don't see the point of whether or not a person is married, what that has to do with them being out after curfew.
Chief, maybe you could explain that whole section too, especially with the BTCA part and what that means?
Well, to be honest with you, I'll have to research why that's a, a defense. Of course, it's, it's a defense to prosecution, which means that it would be brought up in a municipal court probably. The officer wouldn't necessarily be held to understand that particular part of the defense at the time, but I can research that a little bit and get back to you at the next meeting.
Great, thank you. Council, other questions? This is a public hearing, if anyone from the public would like to speak, you don't have to fill out for them, you can just raise your hand and approach the mic. So, does anyone from the public want to speak on this, this issue? All right, any other questions, concerns from the council or from staff? If not, then at six thirty-six, I'll close the public hearing. All right, we're taking no action on this tonight, this was just a, correct? Mr. Turning, no action, we're just, this is just a public hearing.
It's, it's just a public hearing, the statute requires us to hold public hearings, plural, and so my, our, our recommendation to all of our client cities is to hold at least two.
Excellent, so we'll do it again. Thank you, Chief. All right, moving on to item number nine. Item number nine at six thirty-seven, we're in a public hearing, this is consideration action regarding Resolution two thousand nineteen dash eight, fiscal year two thousand eighteen dash nineteen, mid-year budget revisions. For that, Finance Director Kim Quinn.
Thank you, Mary, and Mayor and City Council. This is our opportunity at mid-year to make amendments to the budget for projects that were not completed last fiscal year that need to get rolled forward, funding rolled forward to complete them in the current fiscal year, as well as fund, amend the budget to fund the items that have been approved since October first, when you approved the current fiscal year budget. I'm not going to go through all of the line items that's listed in the backup documentation. I just wanted to mention, and I've got a slide to kind of explain the, the funding. We have an increase of use of fund balance of about one point, almost one point five million dollars that we're adjusting the budget by. About one point three million of that are projects from the previous year that were not completed. We need the funding to be complete, or to, we need to amend the budget to complete funding for the projects. And of, and that leaves about two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars of new items that you have approved, the majority of which you have approved at previous city council meetings from October until the current time. And those items are listed there, the Green Ribbon Grant Administration Funding, Long Range Financial Planning, the crosswalk at Basswood and Whistlestop, the Home Grant Application Matching Requirement. So, all of these items you approved, but we didn't actually amend the budget. So, this is the formal action needed to amend the budget to provide funding for these new projects, as well as the projects that were not completed at the end of the fiscal year. I'd also like to mention that you just approved an item four E, it was removed from the consent agenda, but it was item four E on the, on the consent agenda, sixteen thousand dollars for the Willow Creek Park Plating. I would like to, at this time, add that to the mid-year adjustments. It's not in our list, but we might as well, since they've just been approved, amend the budget for funding for that, that's sixteen thousand dollars. So, that's a, that's an explanation of the general fund. The detail is there, I'm happy to answer questions if you have on specific items. I tried to mention in the detail if it was carried forward or if it was approved by council and when it was approved by the city council. The other funds are in the Enterprise Fund and the Capital Projects Fund, those are all carried forward. In the Drainage Fund, the amendments are to carry forward one item, and then the other one is the Knowles Conceptual Plan, which I believe you approved at the last council meeting. Half of the funding is coming from the Drainage Utility Fund and the other from the Street Maintenance Fund. So, you'll see that adjustment in the Street Maintenance Fund. The Donations Fund is to amend the budget for the grant that the Fire Department received from State Farm, as well as the tree removal along Saginaw Boulevard, which I believe the city council approved at a previous council meeting also. That's coming from the Beautification Fund Balance. And then the General Escrow is a carry forward from the previous year.
Thank you, Kim. Council questions? Cindy?
I have one question. Thank you for that, Kim. I, I appreciate your attention to detail. Make this job a lot easier for us. But the question, I mean, I have is in regards to funding the continuation of the planning consultant, which planning consultant is that?
Mr. Mayor, our planning consultant, she's come a few times related to the overlay ordinance, Phyllis Gerald. So, she's done significant work on that overlay ordinance in the form of workshops, as well as a draft ordinance preparation. She's also done work in the past related to our food truck ordinance that was reviewed and approved by the council. Some recent topics were looking at sale, they're called sale banners, so signage. As we go along and really as we experience more development, the need to update our planning and development ordinances arises because of that. So, that's why I'm requesting that we retain her services.
Other questions? Mr. Farr?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions, and one of them is clarification. The transfer of economic development incentive funds to building improvement grants, the fifteen thousand dollars is a transfer at this point, is that right?
That's, that's correct. It was approved, I don't know if I had it in my memo or not, but it was previous, I do, November sixth, so that was moving money from one line item in economic development budget to another line item. To isolate that portion was up to fifteen thousand for the building improvement grants.
So, it establishes the new line item of building improvement grant?
That's correct, to track it separately from economic development incentives.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Gabe, and your response was that this is probably going to be the only really anticipated recurring expense, because we'd like to see the same amount come through each budget cycle, the fifteen thousand. What I would recommend and what I'm asking of the council is, do we want to see the amount expended before we replenish it, or do we want to allow it to accrue year to year?
I'd like it to accrue year to year. I think that would make sense, but what does anybody else think?
I think, I think we should at least go year to year for the first few years, see how this works out.
Yeah, just, just to clarify, what I'm saying is, is what I would like to see is I'd like to see it spent down and then replenished. I certainly want to see it funded yearly, but what I don't want to see is that we just don't use it for three or four years and let it build up. I'd like to see it used every year and then we replenish it to the fifteen thousand dollar level. That, that's kind of what my thought is. If the council, and I'm sorry if I confused the council with that first statement, but I certainly would like to see it funded every year at, at a level that replenishes it to the fifteen thousand.
Absolutely, makes sense, yeah.
It does.
Other questions, council? Other questions for Kim? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. Anyone from the, the audience want to speak? We are in a public hearing. You don't need to fill out a form, you can just come to the podium to speak on this issue, and this is the mid-year budget revisions. All right, so then at six forty-four, takes out of a public hearing. And so, we need to approve Resolution two thousand nineteen dash zero eight. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the mid-year adjustment with the sixteen thousand dollar adjustment for our Knowles Project, the plating project, as requested by Kim.
Thank you, Patrick. David second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. As opposed or aren't it? Thank you, Kim. Great summary, appreciate the, the information. Moving on to item number, let me find it. Here it is. Item number ten, consideration action regarding award of contract for Willow Creek Park Pavilions. For that, Public Works Director Rick Trice.
Yes, Sir Mayor and Council, I guess you've seen some activity in the last two weeks at the park. For Food Truck Park has finally started to break ground. We, we thank Tarrant County Precinct Four for doing the loop road, it's under construction today. In fact, they just finished lime stabilization. The west parking lot is still somewhat delayed by an atmosphere issue, but, but we're coming along. And so, this is a part of that overall program. We took bids on March twenty-fifth and received a little bid at one hundred and fifty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-six of TF Harper and Associates Company out of Austin, checked their references, and we're excited to make the recommendation that we award the contract to then begin the construction of those two pavilions.
Council questions? Questions for Rick?
I just, just a question about the spread. Is there any concern, since we're talking sixty thousand dollars?
There is a spread, and there is a spread, and that's why we, we're glad that we checked references to see that they're able to do the work. In fact, we had worked with Strong Commercial in the development of this project, and we're surprised to, to see how high they came in with their bids, but so. But at any rate, we're just a smidgen over our budget, but the overall program budget is still under budget. So, I can provide a detail to the council if they're interested, where we're at in the three hundred and seventy thousand that you authorized last year, but we're still under budget for the entire program.
But you're comfortable with TF Harper?
I am. Hope I don't eat my words, but yes.
Do we have pictures or anything yet of it?
Pictures of, you mean like renderings of the, I can provide that, I can go ahead and, all we have is a, is a set of plans, construction plans, so I mean, if some people see that and it's Greek, but...
So, that, it is the rustic look, is that right?
It is a rustic look, but what we've done is, instead of inside, inserting cedar boards in a, in a, in a H beam, we're, we're wrapping columns with cedar, and then the roof will be a rustic green corrugated metal, which will be like an old barn style, but, but they're, they're quite large, forty by fifty in two of them. And the reason we did that is to have maximum flexibility, to have perhaps the farmer's market operating in one and then seeding area in the other, or, or any number of flexible ways to use that space, so.
And we're gonna rent these out too, aren't we?
That's a, that does give us the opportunity to have more rentable space. I might add, part of the reason to, to proceed with the plating is to create a, a separate tract for special event permitting. We can say this area for this purpose on this date, so on so forth, but yeah, we're really excited to see them used.
Excellent. Council, other questions?
We'll add one more thing. The, the program that we, that you authorized last year did not include a, a stage or amphitheater. We may have room in the budget, if not, that we want to consider after discussions with the mayor and others, including that or adding that to the program so that we can have concert events and things of that nature in the food truck.
That would be awesome.
Good deal.
Fine work, Rick, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
May I make a motion that we take staff recommendation and award the Willow Creek Pavilion Contract to TF Harper in the amount of one fifty-five eight sixty-six, as in our packet?
Second.
Valerie second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. As opposed or isn't it? Thank you, Rick. Appreciate you moving that forward. Item number eleven, action and, considering an action regarding performance contract with Shonda Rains Productions for two thousand nineteen Train and Grain Festival. For that, City Secretary Janice England.
Okay, Mayor, just give a little bit of background on Train and Grain. I know people have been real excited and wanted to see that come back, and we have a committee that's been meeting since November. We meet monthly, chairpersons Karen Cromwell and myself. Got about twenty-five on the committee that is representatives of various city departments, some local businesses, and from the and from the school district. We also have a subcommittee that we've been meeting with to lay out grounds, the best way to get people in and out and secure things. So we've been doing a lot of work. The festival will be on Saturday, October the 26th, from 9 to 5. The rain date will be the following Saturday, November the 2nd. The school district has been kind enough to allow us to use the parking areas at Saginaw High School at no charge. We do appreciate that. We're not planning to charge an admission charge this year. We want everybody to feel free to come and bring their families. We are going to encourage people though to bring canned goods to be donated to Community Link, and we're hoping to be able to have one of their trucks on site, so we can just fill it up as people bring things in. So we think that would be a good time of year for that. Some of the activities that we have confirmed are a car show with Christian Classic Cruisers, face painting, storytime, both in English and Spanish, petting zoo, mobile dairy classroom, cornhole tournaments, washer tournaments, baking contest, a couple of bounce houses, MedStar ambulance will be there with an ambulance on display. Senior citizens are going to participate with some craft booths. We'll have an information booth that we're hoping to show some history of Saginaw, as well as the Train and Grain from years past when we used to have that. We'll also be having t-shirts and hope to set up a display where people could take selfies, photos, or whatever there at the festival. We're also working on several other activities, magic shows, performances by local musicians. We've got several groups here in town that are dance groups, tumbling groups, karate. We're willing to include them as well and get as much of the local people involved as we can. We think that'll make it a good deal for everybody. The graphics arts class at the Hollenstein Center is working on a concept design for our t-shirt. We should have that here in the next few weeks, and we'll get going with that. On the agenda tonight is a proposed music headliner group that would come on at 3:30 that evening, or that afternoon actually. It would first be a set with the Texas Country Music Hall of Fame Band. They would be on for about 30 to 40 minutes. They would be followed by TG Shepherd, who would be on for about an hour and a half, so you'd end up for about, about a two-hour show from 3:30, and it would kind of close out the festival. We did that because we wanted to have it during the daytime, trying to save costs where we didn't have to have lights and that sort of thing, and the extra security. So that's why it's a daytime event, and it's just a one-day event, since it's the first year for us to bring it back. The contract includes the cost of a stage, sound people to run it, the stage will be covered, it includes basic lighting, sound crew. The total quote for that is $16,500. Half of that is due when and if this contract is approved, the other half is paid at the festival on that date. There's some extra cost in that, because this is a group that'll be coming from out of town, a few hotel rooms and some things like that, that add a little, a little over 2,000 to that. So the proposed contract's in your packet. We are, there's some of that stuff on there, as far as backstage passage, that will not apply, because of course we won't have a backstage, because we're going to be there in the parking lot. It does call for qualified stagehands, which is just people that can help move things around. One thing that we are concerned with, and are not really concerned, but want to make sure we cover our bases, is of course you never know about the weather. And if we do get, have to cancel, what we would propose to do is to get a rainy, it's called a rainy day type insurance, that would cover us if we were to have to cancel that, because right now, as a, and it's pretty standard on this kind of contract, is you don't get your money back. Once, if it cancels, you're just out the money. So that's, that's something that we've thought about as well. We have started, had letters go out in January for sponsorships. We've got vendor forms that are posted on our website. To date, we have received 4,900 in sponsorships from, I believe, eight sponsors, as businesses here in Saginaw. We have pledges for 7,500 that we should have here in the next few weeks for vendors that have turned in their paperworks already to secure their booths, that's 425. And I have a lot of people that have already emailed me wanting to volunteer to help on the day. So a lot of interest, a lot of excitement, and this is a headliner entertainment for the afternoon, for your consideration.
Thank you, Janice. Counsel questions? Valerie?
Janice, can I ask you a question? I'm on the committee, but I don't remember this.
Okay.
When is the latest that we can sign this up?
I don't know that there's a, the latest. I know, you know, eventually their schedule will fill up, but they didn't give us a date by, you know, a certain day we have to do. Now, I know the contract in the book says we have to have it signed by a date in April, that's what it came with, but I don't know that it would just be, I guess, taking a chance on their schedule getting full at some point.
Because my concern is that's going to take up all the money that we have.
It is a lot of money.
It is.
And it does take pretty much what we have as of right now.
And that's unlike what three hours of it.
That's actually two hours, 30 minutes with the Hall of Fame Band, and an hour and a half with TG Shepherd.
Mr. Mayor, so we've identified and consulted with the city attorney. We're, we're using hotel occupancy tax funds for the entertainment. It's an eligible expense for that purpose, so should the council approve, we would come back at a future time in a, a budget, year-end budget amendment, to amend the hotel occupancy tax expenditures to pay for that, so there wouldn't be, for the entertainment, impact to the general fund.
For the, for the whole amount?
Correct, for the entertainment, yep, the whole amount.
So it's not going to take up what you donated for us to use for the Train and Grain?
No, we're proposing that the entertainment's paid with hotel occupancy tax funds.
Just off the top of my head, I don't recall what that fund balance is, but it sure seems like it's pretty small. Hotel occupancy tax.
The, the entertainment would come for the, from, Bran, correct me if I'm wrong, but we, we can only spend it on certain things. 15% of what we've collected can be to encourage arts and, I don't know if I'm using the right terminology.
Arts, music.
Right.
Et cetera.
So the portion that we have in a balance, set aside for that, 15%, is 20, about $26,000.
And this is the same fund that we use to support Chamber Commerce, is that right?
That's correct.
So is it?
And that's all that we've ever spent the money for. So it's, it's been accumulating over the years, and so this is years' worth of accumulation.
Does that pay for the concerts in the park also, or no? That's a different thing altogether?
No. To my knowledge, the only expenditure we've ever made out of hotel motel taxes is the contribution that we make to the Chamber of Commerce.
Counsel, other questions?
Yes, sir, I have one. The stage, you said this is provided by TG Shepherd?
Yes, it would be well by Shonda Rains Productions. They had, the first contract we got was just for the entertainment, and they had specific type of stage, sound, that they were going to need, and we knew when we saw that, that that was way out of anything we knew anything about. So we had them bid that, and that's a pass-through as part of this $16,500, is, is, part of that is paying for the stage, the setup, the lights, and the people to run the sound.
Okay. Is that stage going to be available for any other entertainments we have during the day?
Yes, that was part of the request we made with them, is that stage will be up and ready to go when we open this festival at 9:00. We'll have full use of it until 1:30, which is when we'll vacate it, so they'll have time to get their equipment up, do their sound check, and that sort of thing. So we'll, we'll use it up until that point, and what we're thinking, and we haven't got this set in stone yet, is that we'll have another area for a smaller stage type where we can still, entertainment will continue, it'll just won't be on that main stage for that last, those two hours.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, other questions?
I, I just, I recall most of the talent in past years was all volunteer work, I think. I don't know, is this the first time that we've paid for, actually paid for music? For, and I'm talking for the Train and Grain, I'm just, I'm just.
I, I don't really know that for sure. I don't recall us paying before, but I, I wasn't this involved before. I, I just helped.
Okay, I, I'm just wondering, and I just don't have a, I don't have a feel for what the market is in this.
It's, it's kind of crazy, because we got some different groups and different amounts, and, and I was surprised.
So this was pretty much in line with everything else that you were seeing, or what?
It, it was on the lower end of some of them, yeah. Some of them were as much as 25, 30,000.
Hmm.
So, and then some were, you know, five, five, 7,000.
Okay. Thank you, Janice, appreciate it.
Counsel, other questions? Anything else? If not, I will entertain a motion. Mary?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the contract, performance contract with Shonda Rains Productions for the 2019 Train and Grain Festival Entertainment.
Thank you, Mary. Cindy Second? All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Thank you, thank you, Janice, appreciate the hard work, committee. Looking forward to an excellent event. All right, item number 12, Consideration Action Regarding Adoption Resolution 2019-03, Approving an Advance Funding Agreement for Non-Terrestrial Transportation on System with Tech Stop, and a big, long ordinance, which we can talk about. For that, Director Public Works, Rick Tries.
I'm going to try to be brief, but it may not be possible on this one. This is a, an item that we returned from a February, I believe, 19th meeting, at the request of Councilmember Copeland. It was tabled and brought back to the staff for more work. We went to Tech Stop in an effort to clarify the funding responsibilities of the two parties, the Highway Department and the city, and those, those responsibilities are outlined in Attachment C to the, to the agreement, to the, to the advance funding agreement. I put before the dice each of your seats, just a comparison between the 2015 agreement and the 2019 that's before you tonight, just to, to show the differences. You can see the primary differences in the, in the 2015 agreement, we had paid $27,950 to the state and had another $50,000 due to the state before construction. The new agreement, the 20, the 27,000 is paid, and that is the, the end of our obligation to the state. In Attachment C, the state has agreed to attach language that clarifies that our participation to the state for environmental and engineering direct state cost is capped, and what we've already paid to date. So what you see is, is our expense. The only other expenses are, are project costs that we had already borne, were already going to borne in the, under the previous agreement, as a bond project. And maybe Bran wants to chime in on.
With, with counsel's permission, I just want to dovetail into this. I, I think it was helpful that the agreement was tabled, because there was a discrepancy with respect to the various numbers. We had paid a portion of what we otherwise would have been responsible for under the 2015 agreement. The new agreement suggested that, that what we had already paid was going to be shifted to the state, when in fact, that was not going to be the case, even though they were going to assume the remaining larger $50,000 payment that we otherwise would have owed under the 2015 agreement. They did agree to shift that to them, and it, it does clearly provide in Exhibit C that each party with respect to the allocation of costs is responsible for their own cost overruns. Now, with respect to, to Councilmember Copeland, you did have a, a comment that I think it's important to address. You did point out an inconsistency between the staff report and what's called Amendment Number One. So in, in fact, I, I looked at everything. I personally believe that the staff report is the document that's accurate. I think it does accurately provide that each party is responsible for their own cost overruns, to the extent that those costs are allocated to them in the agreement. What is, in language that is somewhat inartful, that perhaps could have been better clarified, is the sentence in Amendment Number One, that says all of those, we're terminating the 2015 agreement in order to shift all the costs to the local government. That's not accurate, that sentence. At, at the same time, that sentence in Amendment Number One doesn't have any legal force or effect. It, it just reflects intention that is not accurately reflected in the new agreement. It, it's unfortunate, and we could go back to Tech Stop and say, this sentence isn't correct, when, when it attempts to reflect our thoughts or our intentions, but legally, I, I don't believe that sentence matters. The, the only language that's effective in Amendment Number One, which is a page and a half long, is that it effectively terminates the 2015 agreement. So with that said, please, if, if anyone has any questions, be happy to answer, and I know Rick is as well.
I would also add that when we were first approached by Tech Stop to, to perform this action, that was the dialogue that occurred between myself and the contract staff, was that they had been directed to clarify the responsibility of the parties and any cost overruns that might take, and, and to clarify how that happens, so that's really the intent for the change.
Ordinarily, you wouldn't sign an amendment to terminate an agreement. So the whole vehicle is awkward. We would just say in the new agreement that the prior agreement is terminated in a single sentence. I don't really know why we have to have two documents, but sometimes, working with the state, it's just easier to acquiesce if there's no legal consequence for doing so.
Let me show you where the state.
The state.
The county's been very.
The county is fantastic.
The county's been very good to us, so the state is a little different. All right, so any other questions, counsel? Mary, go ahead, Mary.
I have a question, and I feel like I should explain for the public record.
Are you on there, too?
I don't have any questions, but I feel like I should explain for the public record that my vote will be no, and the reason that it will be no is simply because I'm opposed to the project.
Thank you, Mary. Other questions?
Just have a couple of questions. And Mary, the tabling did save us $50,000, is that right?
The new agreement does, yes.
The new agreement does.
We had a, we had a previous obligation of $50,000.
But it, the indirect state costs of 686, 605, those indirect costs, are they itemized? Do they tell us what that is? It just, it's just indirect cost?
It's a lot of overhead. If you look through their project manuals, you won't find any documentation on what that is. The agreement doesn't specify what that is, so since it's not an expense to the city, it was really, in my opinion, moved to understand what it is. Again, it's dealing with the state, and they have their formulas to, to assign or define what that overhead cost is, and it is what it is.
I'm, I'm just curious, you know, in, in this agreement, by them offering funds and by us accepting funds from the state, then that gives strings for them to attach to us, in looking at some of their minority business participation requirements, and so on and so forth. Are these requirements in more excess than what we would ordinarily see in our RFPs or RFQs to the marketplace?
They would be, but let me, and this is probably a good opportunity to bring this up. Just in the last month and a half, there's been a, I guess, a change in direction in how this project was originally scoped, and how the state would manage that. Originally, that was going to go through the state process, the whole NIPA process, would go through the district engineer, and then make its way to Austin for approval, and they would be part and parcel, part of the bidding process. All of their requirements, DBE, et cetera, would be part of that contract, contracting process. In the last month and a half, we have found out that now they're going to handle this project as they would a driveway permit, although this is a very large and very expensive driveway permit. The good news is, it doesn't have to go to Austin and go through that process. We don't have those sorts of requirements attached in the, in the contract anymore. The bad news is that the state is not going to inspect the project. So that is become now an additional expense to the contract, to the project. And so we have allocated additional funds. I can give you an update on kind of where we're at in terms of our budget, just for your information, but we had the project just recently, in the last thirty days, forty days, has been reestimated and it is still at eleven and a half million. So that is the current project estimate. We have allocated about seven hundred and fifty thousand as a budget item for a third-party inspection and also an amendment to Kimbley Horn for engineering oversight during construction. And so the bottom line for all of that is that with the, with the county's funding, participation in the bond monies and savings from other parts of the whole program, the Bailey-Boswell Phase Two, et cetera, we're about one point nine million dollars in the red at the, at the current time, current point in time. So anyway, we have three permits still outstanding. The Highway Department has moved it from the district level to the, I mean, sorry, from the area level to the district office for review. We expect that approval any day. In the Union Pacific Railroad, they had a large turnover of staff about three months ago and we finally found the person that was contracted to review these plans. He has moved those plans to the structural people at UP and that occurred February eighth. And then finally BNSF, on March seventh, they moved the project forward to their structures group. There were some issues concerning constructability and some encroachments that were going to be caused by the project that still exists today, but those are issues that they're trying to work through with their permitting folks. So typically, BNSF, we're told, is a thirty-day turnaround to get comments back from their structured people. So I want to say that we, the permitting is a torturous process through these groups, but we are making progress, it's just slow and we don't know, again, whether that permitting would happen next week or three, four months from now. We really don't have a feel, other than we know that it is moving through the process. We just don't know when they're going to have a final response for us. And at the end of that final response, there's likely to be permitting fees for the two railroads, just like we had agreements on the Phase Two Bailey-Boswell. So anyway, that's a lot to digest. So if you have any questions, I'd try to glad, try to answer those for you.
So it falls back to that six eighty-six. I mean, if they're, if now the state is washing their hands of the inspections and they're now treating this as a glorified driveway permit, I, I can't imagine what six hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars is going towards.
There will be some oversight because we are, we are encroaching on their right of way. So they will observe the process, but it won't be hands-on, in-the-trenches, day-to-day inspection like we would want, you know, for an infrastructure project that we will own in the future.
So, and you mentioned that both UP and BNSF is reviewing from a structures standpoint? Are we in, is there some jurisdiction there?
Not, not for the capacity or the strength of the bridge. The issue is, for BNSF particularly, there's a constructability issue. Apparently, they had an episode on another bridge in another state where their tracks were damaged. So they're, they're a little, as you would expect, they would have a knee-jerk reaction to be more conservative in their approach. In the way bridges are typically constructed, they didn't want it done that way, so they wanted justification for the way that we were constructing the bridge. We've had conversations with contractors. We have responded with what we think is a valid justification for building the bridge the way that we want to build the bridge, which would be least cost for us. And, and he moved it on up the process. So we haven't heard back what the response is going to be on that yet.
Okay, so there is a possibility that their review may interfere with the design that we've already presented?
It won't, but it could affect price because we had conversation with contractors, like I said. One contractor in particular said you could build it the way that BNSF had said, but you know, it's, it would take a lot more precaution and it was going to be more expensive to build it that way. So we don't see any reason why that we can't build the project the way that we propose and that's kind of where we're at with it.
Thank you, Rick.
They have the final say, so.
And at this point, you've answered the question in terms of where we stand in the current budget and you've explained very well where we stand in the permitting process. And I guess we're just handcuffed to whenever it makes, the permit makes its way up the Tech dot chain and whenever BNSF and UP decide they want to release the documents.
And whenever BNSF and UP, you know, we're just, we're not high on their priority list. This is not making the railroad money, so you know, it's just, it's just, like I said, a hard process to go through.
Okay, thank you, Rick.
Counsel, other questions? Concerns? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve or adopt Resolution 2019-03 and authorize execution of the advance funding, advance funding agreement, Amendment Number One, and the advance funding agreement for non-traditional transportation on system with Texas Department of Transportation.
Thank you, David. Valerie Second? All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? All right, thanks, sir. Thank you, Rick, appreciate your hard work. All right, moving on, we are at item number thirteen. So at seven seventeen, recess into workshop. Item number fourteen, report on Sister Cities Program and Myanmar trip. City Manager, Gabe Ram.
It's. It's six forty-seven in Myanmar. So as we would say in the country of Myanmar, good morning or greeting, Minga La Ba. So Minga La Ba to my many friends in Myanmar. Minga La Ba to Saginaw's most famous Myanmar honorary sit, or excuse me, Myanmar's most famous Saginaw honoree, Myat Tandaru. So she's, she's watching. Want to express my thanks first off to the mayor and counsel to be able to go on this trip. I was pleasantly surprised to find that in my absence two weeks halfway across the world, we had in my tenure the shortest council meeting on record, so that was great.
I don't think that was a coincidence, Gabe.
Just a couple of points about the program I participated in. The U.S. Department of State is the sponsor. The goals of the U.S. Professional Fellow Program are to enhance professional skills primarily in developing countries. There were five fellows in my cohort that went to Southeast Asia. Two were from Texas. One was the city manager Clay Pearson in Pearland. He went to Thailand relatively recently, so he's coming home soon. The goals are to support governance. Myanmar is a baby as a democracy, 2012. So imagine this. In nineteen forty-seven, after World War Two, Myanmar formerly was known as Burma. They were a colony, a British colony. A very famous general, General Aung San, told the British as a thirty-year-old man that you can either leave our country and let us have freedom or we'll fight you anyway we have, we have means to. So General Aung San was assassinated in nineteen forty-seven by a paramilitary group as he was negotiating independence for the Burmese people. So he lost his life. His daughter, who was two at the time, Aung San Suu Kyi, is now the equivalent of the prime minister in Myanmar in the first democratically elected government since, since that time. She received the Nobel Peace Prize in the nineties. She was visited by past presidents and is highly revered in her country. I'm going to show you pictures because the pictures tell the story, but I can't, I can't put into words what I felt and what I saw. I just can't. Myanmar is about the size of Texas. Fifty-five million people, a number of different provinces and states, right? No different than the United States. We have fifty, they have fifteen. The best description of Myanmar is, that I heard, is it's where China meets India. So if you can kind of keep, most people would recognize China, India, very large and populous countries would recognize those, those two world powers and it's really a neat blend in the country. And there's a number of different languages and ethnic groups within the country. There's also, because Burma was a British colony, there's a lot of English or at least some, the average person has some knowledge of English, much like in Texas with, with the history in Texas, a lot of people know some basic, you know, cerveza in Spanish, right? Or hola, right? So some people, especially in rural areas, know some English. It brought me, and I am not a world traveler by any means. I've been to exactly three countries now. One, the United States where I was born. Two is Canada, Quebec, which, where I was raised. That was kind of like, not terribly exciting, kind of like if we went over to the closest foreign country to us, which is Oklahoma. You know, nobody's excited about their next-door neighbor. I'm being silly, and then Myanmar. Part of my travels, in addition to the, the program, was to, to maybe talk about Sister City partnership with a municipality. I, so on the, the photo on the left is a picture of the rough equivalent of the elect, elected officials plus some of the administrative staff in Myanmar Township. So Myanmar is in the northern kind of third of the country. It's, the city of Myanmar is about twenty thousand people, so similar to Saginaw. The township, which would be our equivalent of the county, is about a hundred thousand people. And there's almost ninety small villages outside of Myanmar. So to the right is, is Myat. Next to Myat is, we, one of the beautiful things about Myanmar is you don't call somebody by their, their first name. You give them an honorable title. So women who are older than you, you would, you would say Da, which is the equivalent of, of Mrs. or ma'am. Men who are older than you, you would say U, which is kind of like saying sir. Somebody who is roughly your same age but, but older, you would say Amma, which is sister. So in the middle is Nilar Luen. She's an attorney. She's an elected official and has been elected since 2015. Interesting things about the elected officials in the area is they live in government facilities and they basically dedicate all their time to the business of the area. So things that we take for granted, one of the things they asked me, well, in one of my many visits, how do you prepare agenda for elected officials? And I thought, well, it's kind of easy. We have contracts, we have master plans that generate projects. These are all things that, if you think of seven-year-old democracy, they're still working these things out. They're talking about creating taxation systems that work, creating permit systems that work. So it's, it's really, we, we take our processes for granted and I'll be the first to admit that sometimes they, they don't work, right? And we certainly need to always be of the mind to improve them, but to see the ground floor, we have a lot to be proud of and a lot to give to our friends in Myanmar and in developing countries. The food was great, so a couple of pictures on the left, a traditional Burmese-style meal. There's a number of different salads of all different types, lots of the things I like. One of the national dishes, or two of the national dishes. One is called Lapet, which is a tea leaf salad. The other is called Mohinga, which is a stew, a soup made out of fish. When you order a meat in, in Myanmar, you, you wouldn't get portions equivalent to the United States, so you would get a few bites and most of your meal is rice and vegetables and a number of salads. Was able to work with, with Ellen as well as round up some books at our house and bring books, use books to, in my, my carry-on luggage to the primary school in, in Myanmar, which in many respects, and I'm somewhat of an emotional guy, was hard not to hold back tears to see the joy. One of the teachers that's like directly in front of me was seated and he said to me, you know, through Myat, he said, "We can't let the students use these books, they're too beautiful. We just want to display them." I said, "No, you know, they're going to do like my kids and chew on them and ride on them and that's, that's the purpose." But they were very appreciative. I took a number of little trinkets with me that said City of Saginaw and it just gave me a lot of joy to see, you know, Myanmar children say Saginaw, Texas. And they would say, "I'm very can." So near Myanmar in the township, this large statue is a pagoda, a Buddhist temple. I went up and what's interesting when you visit certain important sites, whether they're Buddhist or just special sites in the country, you take your shoes and socks off. So there was a pretty goofy-looking dude that was substantially taller than most people going barefoot, you know, all around the country. It was fun. Twenty-seven floors in that pagoda, that statue, you can actually go up and the view is really amazing. The, always in presentations have to appeal to the audience, so. This facility on the right, the Buddhist monks live on donations. They accept food and money from the people and they have no jobs other than they, they pray and they're very studious and assist the people. They also do a lot of humanitarian things. So this is a large eye clinic that the Buddhist monks, anybody who has need can come get eye surgery from hundreds of miles away. It's just a few miles outside Myanmar. I asked the mayor many times what he does. Because I'm a simple guy, he has told me that he helps people see with Alcon Laboratories, so that's an eye clinic near Myanmar. Yangon is the principal city, the largest city in the south. To the left is a picture of Suetagon Pagoda. It's all golden-colored, really neat site, Buddhist temple. This was a picture of an alley that was just really cool in Yangon. So Yangon, six million people and just every, every type of housing you could think of, very, very urban, very dense in spots. This was a project that, I'm trying to think, some sort of nonprofit, they call them NGO, non-governmental organization, pitched to beautify the alleys. So they have a rainy season, it rains three to four months a year. The alleys fill with trash and debris and kids in the city don't have anywhere to play. There's some, some games they play, they play a ball game. It's kind of like hacky sack with a ball called chinlong. So you'd see them playing in the alley. This alley in particular, they put like some public art, they painted and just, it was a cool place that they cleaned up. They had, you know, what the equivalent of HOA in place to maintain it. It was just fun in the middle of a huge city to see this kind of bright spot little alley. More food. I ate a lot, it was all good. One of the things as matters respect, especially when I went in the rural areas, you know, you eat a little bit or you drink a little bit at each house. So the two little white things there in the picture on the left are quail eggs. I went to a village and almost every village home I went to, I ate an egg or two about the fifth time. I was starting to feel the effects, but it was good. Myat works for, it would probably be the rough equivalent, it's a nonprofit agency called Alarm, would probably be the closest that the country Myanmar has to like the TCEQ or environmental compliance. In Yangon, city, six million people, if you have industrial facilities, and they're all over, you can discharge wastewater directly into streams and no treatment, you know, again, things we take for granted. again, things we take for granted. So Myat, Mr. Wen, her supervisor and the executive director who's, who's trained in the United States, they're just doing great, great, great work in their country, and there's a lot to do. Neat thing about Myanmar is that the, the country is full of natural resources, they need structures in place to protect that and to preserve that. One thing consistently I saw everywhere in my travels were, oddly enough, French tourists. So my hotel in Yangon was probably seventy percent French tourists, Chinese tourists were coming, and the amount of industry that was controlled by the Chinese or had Chinese investors was, was amazing. Just funny, when you walk in an office building, you take your shoes off and you, you go barefoot. So again, awkward-looking guy, no shoes around Yangon, pretty funny. Had the opportunity to present at multiple conferences, which was really fun, just a picture from one of them. Just some next steps, again, I'm very, my, my heart's full having gone there. Was able to connect with the United Methodist Church in every city I stayed in, so Myanmar is approximately ten percent Christian, but when I saw the, you know, my church in particular, United Methodist Church is very comforting, although I don't speak Myanmar, to be able to, you know, talk with the pastors was, was a lot of fun and see the work that they do. I, I can't, I can't stress how much of an honor it was to, especially the people in Myanmar, that, that Myat was recognized. I, I mean, and again, to hear them say Saginaw, Texas, it just, like, it gives me chills, but the, the, the people were so appreciative, and I hope that if it's the council's desire, if we're interested in, in doing a sister city program in the future, we have just as much to learn from our friends in Myanmar as they have from us, but again, things we take for granted in, in our business are things that they really need. So Myanmar needs your knowledge and the way you conduct, you know, they're observing the way we conduct ourselves in, in meetings. Sure, they need financial resources like any developing country, but what they need is the knowledge, the, the governance structures, the professional practice, that sort of thing. So, you know, if it's the council's pleasure, we could pursue a sister city resolution, request that we partner with, with Myanmar, set up some sort of program, maybe invite someone there to visit us. Will host another Y S E L, E A L I, Y C Lee fellow through the State Department the end of this month in May. She's from, from Yangon, she's interested in, in urban planning, so she'll be with us, and I'll, I'll take her to other cities in our area as well. So excited for the future. This is, kind of end on a high note, my favorite picture, so Sei Baba, Sei is a term for a teacher, so Sei Baba was a teacher. He's wearing, wearing a Saginaw hat if you can't tell. He was in prison, he's eighty-six years old, he was in prison seven times over his life for, for no particular reason, you know, under the previous government, could say, you're coming with me and pack your bags, see you later, no questions asked. So he's a member of the, the party that's democratically elected, and he's very excited about seeing their area, Myanmar Township, develop in the future. So they're on a, a river, the Irwadi River. When I was there in the town multiple times, being close to the river, there's a lot of, you know, commercial traffic and fishing and that sort of thing, but there's also kind of like some backpacker-type folks, so I think there's really the opportunity for their city to have tourism, especially because it's very safe, and the regional government is really interested in, in developing and growing. So it just made me happy that I brought some hats, and Sei Baba, I really liked that, that hat, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, and again, I, I thank you for the opportunity as a greatest trip of a lifetime.
Just a historical note, or I don't know if you know the answer, but I know the woman who's in charge right now.
That's correct.
Wasn't she a political prisoner for quite some time?
She was, so Aung San Suu Kyi, her father was the general who, who lost his life negotiating independence from the British, I think she was on house arrest for about twenty-five some years.
Yeah.
Her husband, who was a, an English, English by nationality, history professor, passed away because she chose, if she were to go see him when he passed away some years ago, she was afraid that she wouldn't be admitted back into her country. She has, there's tremendous respect for her throughout the country, and she, she's suffered for democracy, that's the best way I can say that.
So do you think there is a, a part of the population that wishes she wasn't in power and could overthrow her, or do you think it's pretty safe the way it is now?
So, so one of the things that, that the State Department and, and lots of people told me they're encouraging is there's fairly significant foreign investment. So in, in Yangon, there's a pretty new hotel, a couple years old, twenty, thirty stories, that South Korean investors built. The general opinion is that if the military were going to come in and, and take power, that foreign investors wouldn't put money in there if they thought they were going to lose it. Now, as part of the agreement in two thousand twelve, the military has about twenty-five percent of elected representation right off the top, so the military has a controlling block. The first reelection, democratic election, will happen in two thousand twenty, and I, I just can't tell you how sincere and, and earnest, you know, people like Nilar Lewin, I mean, reading laws and, and Googling things in other coun, they just want to serve the people in a democratic way and, and make things better, because they have, they have lived through a system that hasn't been effective and hasn't been able to provide basic public services to a good many people. So I'm confident that democratic elections will continue again in two thousand twenty, and I, I think people recognize the, the democratic representatives, that they're doing their, their job. Hasn't received a lot of press, but Thailand, which would be to the east, had a similar election recently, military controls lots of things, it's contested, but for, for young democracies, it's at least a good thing that they're having open elections. So I, I hope that that continues for the future, and, you know, the country is willing and really wants more foreign visitors, they want tourism. One thing I can say with a hundred percent sincerity, I talked with, with Bryn about this, my mother was convinced that when I went on my trip, that, you know, I wouldn't be coming home and all this, well, if it was unsafe, I wouldn't, four kids, Cory every once in a while acknowledges that she loves me, but I'm just kidding, our, our anniversary's later this month, but happily married, but I, I felt safe, and, and also like a movie star everywhere I went, just, it's silly, but it was fun.
Did you get to milk a cow?
Oh, I did it all, so one of the things that was afforded to me, because of Myat, I was able to go to some of the rural areas. Now, the rural areas in Myanmar Township, they have electricity almost everywhere, which is somewhat unusual, if you go outside of areas, they don't have electricity. One other thing, again, we take it for granted, they have a public water system, but you can't drink it, so it's, it's for, for bathing purposes, you have to buy bottled water. So yeah, I, I did, and, and rural people, doesn't matter where you are, it's a different, it's a different environment, more welcoming, I mean, I can connect with my, my love of cows. I rode in an ox cart, that was fun, took an ox cart ride around, and we picked some fruits that, I don't remember the name, but it was kind of like a cherry, except the fruit was kind of clear and, and it had like a seed, so I, great, great memories in the rural
I've talked to Gabe something about the sister cities idea, what is your feeling on that, council? I mean, we, we pursued it a little bit, do we want to pursue it some more and continue on, especially with Myanmar, what is the council?
I think it's a great idea, the enthusiasm which you share, what you saw there, and, and what we have lost in our, our knowledge of our own democracy, and, and have taken for granted the fact that, that we have a voice, a freedom of voice, and we don't vote. It, it's, it's amazing that, that we can let our own responsibilities and our privileges go to, go to waste because we, we take it for, for granted, and, and I, I think these people are hungry to see the freedoms that we've taken for granted, and I, I think it'd be really neat to, to set up a sister city with these folks.
What would that cost?
You know, the, the program, the program is what, what any city wants to make of it, so we would structure it however you see best. Through the Y C Lee program, we, we can host and will continue to host fellows from, from Myanmar, and that's no cost, the State Department pays that. You know, maybe we would invite somebody from Myanmar to come, come visit us, and in the future send somebody to go visit them, but that's something we could look at year to year, there's no commitment. There, it would be, I think it would be the first, there may be one other similar relationship, but it, it would probably be one of the first sister city relationships in the country of Myanmar. And, and hard to put into terms, by our standards Myanmar, even though a city of twenty thousand about the size of Saginaw, and also close, forty-seven miles to Mandalay, which is a city of over a million, it is very, very rural, but there is a desire and planning efforts through the government to expand. The one thing that, I, I talked with the, the regional government, if you could get a hotel that could accommodate Westerners, you know, I saw so many French nationals come in backpacking, just because it was kind of a rural area, and they were coming right off the river, right off boats. If they had somewhere to stay, I mean, I really think they could see a lot of development, which would, we're a growing city, reasonably, you know, close to a, a bigger major metro area, we have, even though we're, we're nine thousand miles away, we have a lot of similarities. So, but to answer your question, it would cost only what we say it would cost, and just getting to know each other would be the first step.
Counsel, anything else?
Good question.
Sandy, go ahead.
I really was impressed with the Books for Burma project, I mean, is it safe to ship books over there?
So...
And would it be, I think it would be fun to have them send some of their books over here if they have some for our library.
Yeah, I, I bought a few books that were in Myanmar in, in English or, or Burmese that I can share, you know, I, I show the kids, and the script is, you know, I can't read the alphabet. The logistics are really tough, you know, they don't have US Postal Service or, or equivalent, so that's some of the reason why that nonprofit, they basically ask Westerners to take books through their carry-on, and then they distribute them. But yeah, I definitely think we could, we could get them supplies. I will mention too, and I didn't in my presentation, they have a general hospital, and the, the two doctors that were there were very, very kind to me, that may be something we may, you know, support them. Pencils, pens, the hats, these, they just loved it, and, you know, lots of the kids were so sweet, but they, anything we can give the people in Myanmar, we, if my experience is indicative of anything, we'll receive ten times in, in return. And any contribution that we can make to a democracy makes us all better. We're in one prolonged democratic experiment in the United States and in the, the developed world, but we're, we're all still filling this out, so we, we have lots to learn and lots to give.
So Community Link could get a new zip code?
You know, that's, I could ramble on and on, and I'm going to quit here, but, you know, one great thing about Myanmar is that there's a lot of natural resources, they don't have the food insecurity that a country like Bangladesh or parts of India has, so everywhere I went, food everywhere, the street food I loved, you can get green mangoes with like chili powder, I ate maybe ten dozen quail eggs, I mean, it, it's all good, of course, I'm not a picky eater.
They are small.
They are, yeah, so if you eat ten, you know, you should only feel the guilt of like eating three chicken eggs or something, but, but yeah.
Being that it was a, a British colony at one point, how much of the English language is understood there?
So in the, in the big cities, he, Yangon, you could go to any restaurant and order in English, I could, and I had the benefit of having Myat with me. Couple of the teachers in, in Myanmar spoke some English, one of the doctors had some English, so there was a lot of, comparatively, there was a lot of English spoken. And then again, the, the odd thing for me, I didn't run into any other Americans outside of the folks in the State Department, but as far as Westerners, French, French tour groups everywhere, I couldn't really figure out why, some Germans, and then lots of Chinese tourist groups, but yeah, there's some English. And, and if people can't respond in English, they generally could read English, which, which was helpful.
Okay, appreciate it, I think you had a great trip, and let's, let's definitely pursue the sister cities.
Yes, sir.
Great, great.
Yeah, I, I can, we can work on a, a resolution, and we can send that forward to our friends and, and parting, parting words, so, and I'm gonna, I don't know it like mingla ba, which is, you know, hello, how are you, but jasutumbada is thank you in, in Myanmar.
Thank you, Gabe, excellent. All right, so item number fifteen at seven forty-seven, we can leave back in the regular session. My understanding is that executive session is not required this evening, thankfully. Item seventeen, adjournment.
I'm a...
Move your motion.
Valerie, Charlie, all of the favor? At seven forty-seven, we adjourn, thank you, folks.